Good evening. My name is Ken Smith, the Mayor of Vada. It's my privilege and honor to welcome all of you, those of you in attendance, to this regularly scheduled Vada City Council meeting. And as I cast my eyes across the council, it's exciting and energizing to see newly constituted council. And it's 2016, and we're all sworn in and functioning. So I especially welcome all of the council members. And would officially call this meeting to order at 6:03 PM. And we'll proceed with our roll call, which as is customary will be conducted by our city clerk.
Okay. Andy Wilson.
Present.
Jason Daley.
Here.
Joe Scheid.
Present.
Who's next? I think Ruth Krier is the next president. And Judy Costello.
Present.
And the Mayor Smith.
Also present. So with that, the full quorum, we'll proceed with our agenda. And as you, the council, will recall, authorize the Mayor with the positive council affirmation at the time to begin our council meetings with an invocation, but with members of the clergy who would be willing to perform that service for us. I'm pleased to introduce Gary Floyd, his Reverend, and he's the husband of our deputy clerk. And he's agreed to offer our invocation this evening.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You pray with me. Heavenly Father, I give thanks for those you have allowed to lead the city of Vada, Washington. Let wisdom enter their hearts and knowledge fill their awareness. May discretion preserve them and understanding keep them as they make the decisions impacting Vada for generations to come. Grant them vision to seek the good and best choices and hearing to pursue wisdom. I pray that you would bless this meeting this evening with your presence. I pray for each person present, that the God who created them would make himself real to them in an unmistakable way. We ask for these blessings in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you very much, Reverend. We appreciate that. We'll now invite all to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, it's supposed to be right there.
Yes. Mr. Wilson, we really do this.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we'll now proceed with the Mayor's report. I'd like to inform the council that we've set in motion and that we've got confirmation that at our next city council meeting will be a special presentation by various state officials relating to our wastewater system. And so I anticipate that that will take 20 to 30 minutes, and it should be most enlightening meeting because you're going to learn the contents of the letter that's been prepared by the Department of Ecology. And it will kind of stimulate a direction, a definitive direction, which of course will be orchestrated by council. So I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of that, and of course, members of the public are invited to that meeting as well.
Will any of the engineers be here? Will there be need?
That meeting will not have a BHC engineer, although we could invite the engineer. I think that it was intended primarily for the state officials to brief the council on particularly the Department of Ecology's recommendations for the direction for the city. But if members of the council would like to have our engineer present, definitely let us know, and we'll extend an invitation to them.
Do they have any design thing yet that they think of?
Not a specific design, but they've got an emerging recommendation or a strategy for future direction.
Well, thank you.
Absolutely.
That's all I want to know about, if we had a design or something.
Nope. That would follow after the council assimilates the information they're going to provide. Okay. Now, let's see. I wanted to mention that the income survey, which is going to be a necessary thing for us to overcome, we're working with RCAC to who may possibly fund the expenses involved with that, which is the survey that we're going to try and utilize or conduct, which you were told about in our last council meeting by the gentleman who stood up. So I want to keep you advised as to what's happening with that. Yes.
Did I misunderstand Kathy Reed in saying that that was a freebie?
The RCAC is the entity that may provide the grant funding for it.
Okay.
Actually, it's a DOE provides the funding and they hire RCAC, they're the group that actually does.
But this is the roundabout circle that Kathy was talking about, that the other small cities would be?
Right. Right. We have to go through getting approval from DOE for the grant.
Yeah, good question. Let's see. I think you may have gotten in your packet a letter from Cowalitz County, Lewis County Fire Protection District Number 20. Did we give them a copy? Okay, excellent. You may not have had a chance to read.
It wasn't in the packet, it was after the fact.
Oh, boy.
But they should have them, they all have what was in there.
Yeah, no action is necessary on this, but I would bring to your collective attention that they would like to eventually take over the small corner of the fire station. They have a need for it, and I know Ruth, you are actively involved in that. And so they're going to want to invite or visit with the council to see if they're down the road, if you might be supportive of that idea. So that's something just for your information, for down the road, maybe our next council meeting, you might want to deliberate on that. Okay, let's see.
You don't have much choice.
Well, I didn't care. Yeah, but then again, they've been very cooperative and helpful with the community, and if we did discern that there was a need to maintain that, the big community talked to us. Two other quick items. We got a letter from Steve Dobosch, the relatively new Mayor of the city of Toledo. And Vada and Toledo work closely together. We strive to mirror some of the positives that they're engaged in. And at last Friday's Mayor's meeting, he especially extended a fervent invitation to anybody interested in attending their annual big community meeting, is what they called it. It's part of Vision Toledo. And they invite people to come to it because they're very energized by the spirit of volunteerism and the sense of unity that they have in their community for the past three years with their Vision Toledo. And if you come to that big community meeting, you can see what they're doing, and they're just actively inviting interested individuals, and particularly members of city councils, to come and see if you might want to see what they're doing. That would be Tuesday, March 15th, next week. It starts at 7:00 PM at the Toledo Middle School. And all are invited. You don't have to be an elected official, you can. If you have any questions, we have a copy of the letter for you. Last but not least, we received a letter from the Association of Washington Cities informing us that on April 26th, at Toledo High School, they're going to be putting on what they refer to as a small city connector. It's a meeting in which residents of communities our size principally for elected officials. If you're an elected official, they will have a catered meal prepared for you at no cost. If you're not an elected official, then it's a 25 dollar. But you're invited to it, and it's an opportunity to network and to hear some of the successful ideas that other similarly sized cities are engaging in. I've been a number of times in years past and found it to be most enlightening and worth the effort, and I think prove again that there is occasionally a free lunch. In this case, a free dinner.
Did you have a time on that?
Yeah, it's from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at Toledo High School.
April what?
April 26th.
26th.
Andy and I plan to attend.
Excellent. And you need to pre-register. Good.
I'd like to get a copy later on. That's all I wanted, the time and the date.
Yeah, we'll definitely get a copy.
I've been several of them, they're very, very good.
I agree. Last but not least, I'm going to extend a public invitation to any of the relatively new or new council members. If you want to have a briefing with the Mayor to get insight or, you know, ask questions about anything being elected officials, I'm open and available, and you could arrange a meeting through the city clerk. I'd be more than happy to do that. Okay, there. That concludes the Mayor's report. You'll note now that we've added to the agenda, and it'll be a regular item, the council report, which Wilson came in, and a lot of cities have that, and so we just figured that in the interest of time, we'd do that, but it's a council meeting. And so I would invite anybody who may have some reports you'd like to share with the council members and public, it'd be an opportunity right now to do that.
Of course, I want to go for a first meeting. I've been down to the sewer treatment plant many times over the last nine years. I was in here eight months ago complaining at what a mess it was down there. I was down Sunday, and I would like everyone to know what a fabulous job that John has done cleaning that up. The brush is all nice, it's chipped, the plant itself looks like somebody's gone through there and completely weeded it, cleaned it. I mean, for someone, for an employee that only has 30-some hours a week, he does a lot as far as all of this stuff, plus the streets, plus all the other. So add a voice to him.
As his immediate supervisor, I will share that observation.
Please do.
And I will attest to your accuracy.
Please do, because it was really, really eye-opening.
We're very fortunate to have him, there's no question. But, and I would echo that with all of our city employees.
And may I have just another second?
This is your time.
I got a phone call before it came to the meeting tonight. We have dogs running loose in our community without leashes, and they have killed ducks and baby ducks, and the owner of those ducks and baby ducks is crying on the phone tonight and would like me to say something to the council and the public and to put it in the article, that we have a leash law, please abide by the leash law.
I have a daughter-in-law who lives on our property who lost her ducks, and so maybe that's a culprit.
I don't know, but...
Well, so there's two.
Just was on the other side of you, on the other side of town.
Okay. Well, we've known that we're awash in cats and dogs. Maybe when it rains, it's raining cats and dogs.
This is great.
No, but it's been an ongoing problem. We've never successfully overcome the problem, but duly noted. Other comments?
Well, I don't want to be nasty about this, but I hope this isn't Flint, Michigan, because here in the last six months, I've had little settlements of water coming out of my pipes, and I don't think it's the pipes. Number one, they, the water system hasn't been flushed for years, and it used to be flushed every year, period, by my public employee when I was Mayor.
I think it has been flushed, and they actually cleaned inside the water storage. So what makes you think it hasn't been flushed?
I have never seen them out flushing them. They're supposed to start way up here, and they end up down here.
Down there, right.
And I think it should be reported, and I would like to know the dates that they've flushed them, just to make sure that I'm...
I think we can inquire with that, and we will follow up on it. Check to see if the pipes have actually been flushed.
They have?
No, we'll check to see if they have been. And we'll get the dates if we can.
It's just a health issue, and I, maybe I'm wrong, but I haven't seen them flush the water lines like they do.
Good. Ruth, did you have that?
Yes, I do. So maybe if you know about Jasper, the little boy that lives in Maryland, and April is Child Abuse Awareness Month. And last year, I was given permission by the council to decorate the town in blue with ribbons, and I would like to ask for that permission again.
Okay.
And it's not only just for Jasper. I work on this throughout the year. We go to Olympia, we do a walk up there, but nine kids die every year, or every day, excuse me, of child abuse. Nine kids. So I'd just like to...
Did you want to brief the council on the memorial that you ordered planned?
Yes, it's, Jasper's memorial is down by the jail. It's a work in progress. Was met with a guy down there today, and we did a little work. And he informed me, he comes there once a month. He lives in Onalaska, didn't know Jasper, but he cried a lot today and shared, you know, his love for Jasper. And so it's still a work in progress. I wonder if he'll come to have a look soon, but...
Well, now, I'm not entirely sure, but it's appropriate in a council report to engage in council action. It should be officially placed on the agenda as a matter of business. Perhaps if the council is willing, we'll just put it on our next council agenda for official action. Okay? And any other council comments? Right? Very good. We'll proceed with the agenda approval.
I, I would make the motion that we approve the gentle approval for the city council meeting agenda for 3/10/2016.
Okay. You've heard the motion from Mr. Wilson to approve tonight's council agenda. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded. Now, you'll note that there's only one item on our official agenda. I know that, I would like to, you know, I forgot a Mayor's report to, I wanted to give just a two-minute soundbite regarding the Brandon Milton communication which you got from Jennifer Robertson. And then, so could we add that as item number two? A brief Mayor's report on Brandon Milton's letter?
Yes.
Okay.
And nowhere on the agenda does it have the park board?
And...
And so I have something I should like to say about the park board?
We could add that.
Would it be okay to add that? It'll just be very brief? Okay.
Maybe we should add that up under the voucher approval. Park Board Report? We have the chairman here, are you?
We don't want to report.
Or did you want to? We'll put it as item three. Actually...
She doesn't want to report.
We're not handling this very well. Actually, Mr. Wilson, we should have modified that before your official motion to approve. So, but the submitter of the motion is the only one who can modify the motion. Would you care to modify the motion?
I'd modify that.
To approve it with the addition of items two and three?
Correct.
Okay. Well, you need to articulate that for the public record. Would you restate your motion?
I move that we, I don't know, follow up. We make the approval agenda for the city council meeting for 3/10/2016 of...
Yeah, to add item two, Brandon Milton.
Brandon Milton's letter.
Yeah. And number three, a park?
Question.
Question, a question regarding city parks.
All right, a question regarding the city parks, is that McMurphy Park?
No, it was Saver Parks.
Whitten Park?
Yeah. Okay. All right, I'll capture. Okay, so Mr. Wilson has submitted a motion to approve tonight's council meeting agenda, adding the two items he noted. So do we have a second for that motion?
I second.
Seconded? Fine, this is clear. Any additional commentary? Very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion is carried. Excellent. Now we'll proceed with the approval of the minutes from our last council meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from last week's meeting, February 25th, 2016.
Okay.
I second.
Mr. Scheid submitted a motion to approve those minutes as written for the date noted. We have a second. Mr. Wilson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is carried. Now, the voucher approval. Wait council action.
I make a motion to approve the first half of March 2016 vouchers, $13,804.12.
Okay. The motion has been submitted by Mrs. Costello to approve the voucher amount for March, the amount noted. Do you have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're down to public comment. Okay. All right, moving on. Now, city business. The last two council meetings, I know it's been a topic of council discussion, reflecting concerns on our crosswalk signs and the lights along Highway 506. We did receive a letter dated March 9th, it's yesterday, from David Berkey. He's with the Washington State Department of Transportation. And I think it would be appropriate to just read this, inasmuch as some of the members of the public have been concerned about that, it was then initially raised the issue. It says, "Thank you for your email which was passed on to the traffic office in Vancouver for response. The Washington State Department of Transportation is in support of pedestrian safety measures, provided they are verified to be the best alternative. Too often, there is an improvement implemented that is not impactful or sets a precedence that is counterproductive. For example, state and national studies indicate the overuse of flashing beacons tends to reduce their effectiveness and/or can minimize the compliance at other marked crosswalks without flashing. We would like the opportunity to meet with the city to discuss pedestrian safety measures on a broader scale, in this case, for the Vada community. One of the goals of the department is to focus on building trust and open communication with our local agencies so that the best overall improvement can be identified. If you could let me know when city staff is available, we will schedule to come out and meet with you. If you have any questions or agenda items for discussion, please let me know. Again, thank you for your email, and we look forward to meeting with you." David E. Berkey, Washington State Department of Transportation, Traffic Operation Engineer. So that's one thing. And I know that we also established contact with a Washington, Department of Transportation employee. Do you have his name?
Ryan, I believe.
Ryan Hottle.
Hottle.
Yeah. And explained to him the concerns we had about the inadequate painting and such, and indicated that we would be willing to actually repaint that. That was authorization from the council. Well, Jill talked to him, I didn't, but I indicated that I would try and articulate what happened, so correct me if I don't capture the essence of it. But what he indicated was that they actually have plans on chip sealing 506, which would include through Vada this coming year, this coming summer. And he went on to explain that chip sealing requires, it's pretty intensive, it has to be done just right, and if you were to go ahead and put, repaint and resurface the crosswalk as it is, it would negatively impact the ability to chip seal. And so he strongly encouraged us to not engage in that until after it's been resurfaced. And then they bring in this special paint that has to be heat sealed into the new surface. And it's permanent, and it'll be much more have a dramatic effect, he said. So we couldn't say no. And it was, we were unaware that we were going to get all of 506 resurfaced. So a win-win situation. The only negative is that we're kind of resigned to live with what we've got at the moment. So now back to the initial letter. I know that we were all prepared to install the flashing lights. We could probably proceed with that, although Mr. Berkey doesn't feel that it would be really the wisest course of action, and he's asked for authorization to come meet with council, maybe at a council meeting. So would the...
Need to make an appointment.
Feedback. Is the council collectively supportive of Mr. Berkey's...
Yes.
Okay. Yes, 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 and yes. Okay. Well, and with that, the council, with your approval, that's how we're going to address the safety issues on 506. All right. And allow me to commend our city staff and others in the community who've, you know, generated the energy to make this happen. When the voice is heard, the council responds, and progress is good. So there. We have a comment from the public for the council. Care to entertain that?
Yes. Okay, that mean that he wants a meeting between you guys. Can the people come to it?
Yes, absolutely. It would be in a regularly scheduled city council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All right, okay. So now, let's proceed with item number two. We need to be somewhat guarded in this conversation, but I think it would be remiss if I didn't note that we did get a letter from Mr. Milton, and you should have a copy of that letter. I doubt that you've had time to read that letter. I found it most enlightening, and I'm confident that you will too. I was filled with a sense of optimism about his plans to develop his property in a manner consistent with the overall good of the city of Vada. And then we received guidance from our city attorney, who's been closely involved... And then we received guidance from our city attorney who's been closely involved with that property and Mr. Milton. And the contents of this letter, of course, are privileged and you're aware of that, you have a copy of that letter. I think that you're going to observe that it's the city administration's responsibility to deal with all of the particulars noted by our city attorney in this privileged communication. So I wanted to give assurances to the council that we're going to press forward with this, adhering to the guidance, the legal guidance given to us by Jennifer Robertson. So that was the essence of what I wanted to share with you.
Sounds good.
Does it sound okay? All right. We don't have a lot of options at this moment. We're kind of subject to Mr. Milton and we're subject to the legalities that cities are required to adhere to when it comes to permit compliance. Okay, excellent. And if you have any other questions after you read the material, don't hesitate to call me, but I prefer, given the comings and goings, that we're all busy, to let Jill know that if you have a question for the mayor as we work through the administrative responsibilities we have, that let Jill know and if you'd like to chat, we'll schedule a time to answer questions.
May I ask?
Yeah.
With the word privileged communication, does that mean like my eyes only?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that was what I wanted to know. Okay.
Okay. And thirdly, now we'll, we're gonna have a question regarding the park, so we'll turn it over to Mrs. Costello.
Steve shared this with me tonight. This is from Polo from the park board. And obviously, we're all very concerned about the jail and the foundation and that's what this is about. And he's given a rough estimate of fifty-five hundred to eight thousand dollars to fix that foundation. And I was asking, and I know that's a lot of money and so on and so forth, and I was asking Joe before the meeting, do we have anything in our budget for maintenance of city buildings and et cetera? Or do we just go through the year and pull money from here and there as need be or, I mean, how does this work? Because I'm not, I don't know how this works. So, and obviously, that's a scary little, you know...
That was considerably more than I anticipated.
That was a whole lot more than I think any of it. And we do have, and some of our groups have money, you know, but we're only looking at three thousand dollars. We weren't looking at five thousand, you know, and if it was five thousand, then we only have to come up with two thousand. That's still fundraising, you know, stuff we can do, but not eight thousand or that kind of thing. So I guess, does the city ever match? Do we as a council ever approve anything like matching funds if we raised any money? I mean, I'm just kind of throwing this out there to the group.
Well, generating funds to cover construction or improvements on a publicly owned building is a sticky wicket.
Okay.
It's not that it's impossible and it can be done, but it's not as straightforward as one might initially think. But I personally, overseeing the, well, council oversees the budget, but we get to expend the monies as the council dictates. Let's ask our city clerk. I know there are funds for park usage during the year, but they've been earmarked for certain projects.
Some of it has.
Some, yeah.
Not all of it.
There is some wiggle room, depending on the actual costs of the projects and one of which, of course, we know is, involves McMurphy Park and the extension of the power and maybe water too, yes.
I've never looked into it. Is there any historical grant fund money we can get? You see these other cities are getting...
Well, that's not really a historical building though, per se.
Yes.
It's not a registered historical building.
We call it a historic jail, but it's been so modified, it doesn't meet the historic of the home.
Right. And most of their funding is fifty-fifty, so we still have to come up with at least half the money. So that's something to think about. My answer to your question as the city clerk would be, we need to do a little bit more research and see. There's a couple of places that we might have some money, but I don't know if it would, if it's allowable to use for this type of project or not. I'd have to ask some people and find out if it, if it would be allowable and then how much and things like that, so...
Right, and hopefully he will come up with, you know, it's between five and eight and I'm sure that's just, you know, a generous...
I talked to Polo last week and I didn't anticipate, so maybe we could look at that.
Right, and he was...
Do you think there's any wiggle room?
I have no idea. I just received, he's, Steve's shaking his head no, so...
I don't know. He called me tonight and he had this, and he wasn't even home when I got it, so I wouldn't even talk to him.
Okay. Well, I know that there are other members of the community who have indicated they're willing to lend a hand and maybe we could...
I mean, can we go back to our old plan?
All volunteer?
Yeah, that, that was, you know, with all of the structures, you know, and we have all the house jacks and, you know, as long as it was overseen by, you know...
We have city engineers.
Sure.
Well, we could explore that. I think we could.
And we're not...
Crunch numbers and...
Okay. And we're not allowed to use that money if someone gave you money?
Oh, well, let's address that.
Yes, let's talk about that.
If you had, say, a thermometer, a save our jail campaign or something and a walk-a-thon...
And somebody threw money at it.
Yeah. And I know that there would be people who throw some money at it, maybe not a lot of money, but any amount to get it within reasonability. And I have no doubt that Mr. Totei, who's a resident of Vader, who did the cement for a basketball court and had a great job, he's very skilled and very generous, I have no doubt that this is a cost-cutting project.
But we can use that thermometer money?
There are ways to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you. All right.
We just have to figure out what the ways are.
But we can.
But there are ways to do it.
All right, well, there's a will for this because we need to make that.
I think so, yeah.
Okay, all right, well...
Well, thank you, that was a very timely discussion.
Okay, very good.
And along those lines, it's important that we have that park functioning because the city is sponsoring the Fourth of July event and I met last week with the fireworks blaster who's aware of the budget that he has and where he is ought to trot and I am in the process of putting together a Fourth of July committee that I will submit to the council ASAP because we, it might seem like we've got a lot of time before July, but it actually goes by fast, particularly as you know how it is with May Day. A lot is going on in the next three months. Okay, but that was not on the agenda and I didn't mean to, but I'm just letting you know that the Fourth of July thing is, action is happening behind the scenes.
Well, so is May Day action, happening behind the scenes.
Yes. Okay. Then with that, I don't see any other items on the agenda, I do not, oh, the chairman...
One question. Didn't Pat Overmeyer get back to you about the property of the power department? You have made a, I have talked to...
He said we need to have a meeting.
Okay.
Who's "we"?
The city and the P U D to discuss the options.
Okay. Well, then let's ensure that that happens. Okay, well, did you want to meet with the park board?
I would have to refresh. I'm sure whoever's involved with it, he just said the city, I think, was between, he sent an email that said that they needed to meet with us and discuss the strategy, so...
Thank you for bringing that up. All right, then with that, we will officially declare this meeting adjourned at six forty-two P.M. And thank you all for being here.